Good evening and welcome to the Tewksbury Board of Select meeting of September 17th, 2024. Before we can begin, can we all please stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. Okay. Before we begin, I'm just going to tell everybody we're here tonight. We're not voting on anything tonight. We're here for a discussion on possible housing in town. So first on the agenda is 87 Vernon Street, Middlesex Green Realty Trust, 40B, LIP Discussion. It's right there, it's fine. If you can introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Douglas. I reside at 660 Revere, Massachusetts currently. I'm here representing the Middlesex Green Realty Trust in the matter concerning the proposed 40B local initiative proposal for the LIP project.
Okay. And yourself?
Brian Gadro.
Can you hold up when you speak, just get the microphone close so our recording secretary can pick it up.
Brian Gadro with Hancock Associates. We're located at 34 Chelmsford Street in Chelmsford, Massachusetts with civil engineers, wetland scientists, and Lance Ray Erickson.
All right, thank you. The floor is yours, gentlemen.
Great, so thank you so much for hearing us this evening. You know, just as you already stated, and I just want to put on the record again, you know, again, we're not here tonight for any type of approval process. That's going to be later down the road with the ZBA. This is a formality, but it's one that we're excited to have, and we do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and introduce this proposal and its significance to the town of Tewksbury. You know, as we all know, 40B, there's that 10% requirement for the housing stock that needs to be affordable, designated affordable under 40B. And currently, Tewksbury is just teetering at that 10%. It's actually, I believe it's four, there's only in excess of four units right now above that 10% threshold. And I'm sure, as you're all aware, the challenge for cities and towns is not just getting to that 10% threshold, but it's also maintaining that 10% threshold. And that's, you know, as the housing stock continues to go up, so too must the affordable housing threshold as well, or the number of affordable housing units, rather. And falling under that can open the town up to 40B development projects where developers can see comprehensive permits for dense housing projects with minimal local input. So we'd like to avoid that. We think that this proposal being introduced as a LIP project helps not only maintain that buffer of being above that 10% threshold, but we can do it in a way that's benign and with community input here. And so without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Brian to talk a bit more about the project itself.
All right, thank you. So again, Brian Gadro with Hancock Associates. We're the ones that developed the exhibits that are in your packets. We have two exhibits, a neighborhood exhibit and then a little bit of a closer up look at the subject parcel. So right now, 87 Vernon Street has an abandoned building and a parking lot on it. It was an old VFW, and our client, hopefully future applicant, wants to look to do something with it. So we kind of looked at the property, we looked at the surrounding neighborhood, and tried to come up with a plan or a scheme that fit in with surrounding lots, surrounding homes in there. So what's currently proposed, the lot's about two acres predominantly, it's the parking lot and the old VFW. And we're currently proposing eight single-family lots. So those lots range in size from about 5,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet. And when you look at the neighborhood exhibit, which is the kind of satellite image of the surrounding homes and streets, you can kind of get a feel for the density of this area and how big those lots are. So this is in our 40 district, so minimum one-acre zoning, and essentially none of the surrounding lots are full one-acre, right? So we started looking, we're like, all right, what are our direct butters? How large are those lots? Like, what would actually fit here? And that's how we arrived at this eight-unit number. So with the eight lots and being a part of 40B, 25% of that's affordable, so two affordable single-family homes, and then six market rate homes. As a part of developing this concept plan, we tried to kind of put our heads together and figure out if there was some sort of amenity or kind of public space that could be brought into a part of the project. And directly behind this parcel, there's a landlocked piece of land that's owned by the town of Tewksbury at the end of Joy Street. So we kind of built on that idea, and we took the entire rear portion of the property and earmarked it for some kind of passive recreation. Right now, we're showing some walking trails. The dark green that's on the plan indicates the existing tree canopy that's there, so we're not intending to disturb the tree canopy. Maybe have some, the walking trails, nature trails, things like that, and then really kind of just create a loop from a few parking spaces on St. Mary's through the town-owned parcel, the end of Joy Street, which is unimproved, undeveloped right now, kind of crosses through that, and then over to some additional land where Oak Street, the paper Oak Street ends. And then from Oak Street, the backyard of those lots, there's a rather low-lying wetlands in that area. So obviously, with the plan being conceptual in nature, should this, should we get a nod of approval from the Select Board, this still has to be fully permitted through the ZBA. And we would anticipate that that is going to be probably a big topic item with the board to understand, you know, does this fit with the neighborhood? Is this what we really want here? But this is kind of our first pass at not maximizing the density, if you will, but reserving some of the natural features of the site and then providing kind of that walking path So with the eight lots, again, ranging 5,000 to 12,000 square feet, consistent with the neighborhood, one of the other big advantages of anything being developed on this site is we get to, you know, rehab the parking lot in the building that are there, basically raise them. And then the new development will have full stormwater management, treatment, recharge, things that are not there right now. Essentially, the parking lot, just she pours water out into the street and goes on its way, we'll be able to mitigate that and control it. Any of the public utilities, you know, telephone cable, water, gas, anything out in the road, it's all suitable, obviously, for a single-family home, it being in that single-family neighborhood. But I guess with that kind of high level, we try to create a project that is a lot like the surrounding neighborhood with these eight homes, and we also try to reserve areas to create some kind of public amenity, some kind of preservation of existing trees and woodland that's there. I think that's really, that's a high-level idea that we have right here. And with that, I don't know, Ryan, do we?
Right, yeah, so that's the concept of the project. And again, this is something where we want to almost get ahead of the curve, if you will, when it comes to, you know, increasing the amount of affordable units that we have so that we don't dip below that 10%. Because the last thing that we want is really, you know, a big development coming in, which takes a lot of input away from the town. We want the town's input, and that's why we're doing it through a LIP. But in any event, that's the idea for the project, and, you know, we would welcome questions if there are any at this time.
All right.
Thank you for that, and thank you for your presentation. We'll start off with Mr. Ryder. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think for the residents watching this, can you explain the LIP? So somebody that's not versed in what a 40B is, what a LIP is, and how the town is involved in that?
Yeah, so to really dumb it down and explain it as simply as I can, a LIP is basically a developer and the town working together to create additional units that would be considered affordable units under 40B with a lot more flexibility from the town, because the town is actively involved in working with the developer to get these units pushed through. Unlike a classic 40B development where, you know, you can, there's essentially a lot less input from the local community, there's a lot more bulldozing that can occur at the state level, where you can essentially just get comprehensive permits with very little community input. Here, it's basically walking hand in hand with the town of Tewksbury to create these projects, where it's, where we keep every step of the way.
Okay. Also, through you, Chairman, to the town manager, are those three lots currently that were the walking trails, are those all town-owned lots? No? So can you?
Yep.
Which ones are and which ones are not?
Sure, so if you look at, I believe there's a plan here.
Yes.
So the dark where the parking is, kind of on St. Mary's, that is not town-owned. The one with the circle adjacent to Joy Street, that is the town-owned parcel, and then the large kind of loop on the opposite side of Joy Street is not town-owned as part of the subject parcel.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the manager, has this been done, and these parcels been put out as part of the yard sale program in the past?
No.
No? Okay. So that being said, wouldn't that, would that be the process first before we ultimately turn it over to?
Yeah, we'd have to get approval from town meeting to sell them and go through the proper process.
Okay, so.
We can do it in conjunction. If this is something that we're interested in, then we would move forward with it, but...
Okay. Would the, would a butters have first right of refusal under that?
Mm-hmm.
Or they would?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. And lastly, for now, as the lot sits, 89,000 square feet, roughly, two acres, give or take, as it sits today, two lot, two homes could be built on the parcel, correct?
One to two. There's questions kind of about the lot size and boundary, so we'd have to do full survey, but ballpark, it would definitely be one or two single-family homes.
Okay, worst case, it would be one based upon frontage and lot size, and best case, two, as it sits. Okay. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryder. Ms. Wellman.
Thank you very much. Can you give us a sense of the kind of homes you would be building here? Like what size, what the style would be? What's the aesthetic?
So we're a little preliminary.
It is.
We don't have any elevations or anything to show. A lot of that would be discussed, you know, should this move forward to the ZBA? With the small lots and kind of the price point, I would imagine 1,800, 2,200 square feet, I mean, we're not talking 4,000, 4,000 square foot homes. Architecturally, I don't have a good feel for what would be built.
I think small colonial is probably, you know...
Capes, kind of?
Yeah, something that would coincide with that smaller footprint.
Fit the neighborhood.
Exactly.
What's the price point you're looking at?
For the market rate units?
Well, you just referenced a price point, so, yeah, for the market rate units.
I don't know, I'm not sure. I'd have to check with the developer.
Okay, okay. That's great. Do you foresee any infrastructure improvements you would need to do there, particularly with local stormwater issues?
On-site or on-site?
Oh, I mean, you have to do some retention on-site, right?
Correct, so on-site, absolutely, we're going to be doing stormwater management. It'll be serious dry wells, I would envision, kind of some underground storage. We're not going to take up lot space with big infiltration basins or things like that. So definitely subsurface infiltration, primarily for roofs and driveways. In terms of public utilities, it's all there, you know, gas, electric, whatever, so we'll just be tying into that existing infrastructure.
Okay. It does get quite wet down there, as I'm sure all the residents behind you will tell you. It's an ongoing issue, you have, it's low-lying and it floods a lot, and then it gets awful icy, so it's something you want to look at when you look at your lots and so forth. Generally, I'm in favor of a project like this. I like that it's in scale and respectful of the neighborhood, and it's really important. I know a lot of people who live down here, including some people in the audience, and I think that having the size that you're looking at with the 25% affordability is helpful. You don't have to convince me of staying above the 40B threshold and how hard that is, but I appreciate you bringing this forward to the community and giving us that opportunity to work together. I do think that you're going to have some challenges in this particular lot, I'm familiar with it, but I like that it's respectful to the size of the community, of the neighborhood that's there. There is no section of this area of town that's compliant with current zoning law anyway, so I live on a similar lot a little further away, so I get it. So I thank you for bringing this forward, I look forward to continued community conversation on your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wellman. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question is actually through you to the town manager. So with our recent zoning bylaw changes and the fact that we are over 10%, my understanding is that those zoning bylaw changes were put in place to prevent us from falling below that 10%. So is there, is it be required under the new zoning to include them, if, correct?
I'd have to defer to Alex or Steve on that question.
Can you repeat the question?
Let's come forward.
Yes, while you make your way up here. With our recent zoning bylaw changes and the fact that we are currently over 10%, that zoning bylaw change was made to prevent us from falling below and into previous issues, right? So...
Alex, if you can go to the mic, please.
I mean, the bylaw itself, when we brought it forward, was really, the first goal was to update the zoning bylaws to...
Correct.
And we did put provisions in there to ensure that we would, of the 10%, but it really was a rewrite just to bring the bylaws up to standard. But as far as another zoning change...
So the two items I believe Mr. Mackey is referring to are elements that were already part of the previous zoning bylaw, one of them being the inclusive zoning of 15% minimum affordable units for all multifamily developments. In prior iterations, that was allowed to be waived in favor of fee in lieu of, that was removed. And there is also a 10% minimum requirement for affordable units in open space residential developments, so single-family developments that utilize that OSRD provision, where if they preserve a certain amount of open space, they are allowed to go below the one-acre minimum. A recent development that would be applicable to that is Terramore Drive, formerly 325 Marshall Street, that was developed at a time when the fee-in lieu provision was still in place, so effective May 2022. Those two abilities to waive in favor of fee-in lieu were removed, except the OSRD provision if we are at the 10%. So on paper today, as the applicants or presenters indicated, we're at about 10.01, so an OSRD proposed today may be able to ask for that fee-in lieu of relief. Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be granted for it, but the ability to ask for that relief for any multifamily development is no longer allowed.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. If you can't tell, we've had a lot of discussion in the past few years about 40Bs, so wanted to make sure we got that clarification, because there was a long process redoing that zoning bylaw. That being said, I have, I don't have a lot of concerns, most of them have already been addressed by my counterparts up here. I think my biggest question mark would be potentially considering increasing the size on some of these lots. I don't know that eight are going to fit down there. You know it's tight down there. I don't think we want to jam as many houses as we can onto this lot. Again, in concept, not opposed to this, especially if we're being cognizant of the wetlands down there, of the flooding, of the stormwater. Other than that, I think my only other question would be, have you done any outreach to the residents in that area? Like a community outreach meeting or any sort of discussion?
Not yet. Not yet. We're, again, we're still in a preliminary stage here, but after this, and as we get going on the application, we absolutely will be in communication with residents about this, and also trying to listen and see what input state we can suggest.
That's very good to hear, especially, you know, when you came in and you said you're trying to get that community input for these things, so I think the butters, the neighbors, that local area would be good to converse with.
Absolutely.
And it would be a recommendation, since we're not really making any decisions tonight, before you come back, that is something I would probably recommend that happens.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, I think my last point is, I appreciate the fact that you're conserving that green space in the back, that you're trying to, you did say you were going to conserve that existing tree cover, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so kudos for that, much appreciated. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Mr. Kratman.
First off, Mr. Chairman, is there a way to find out, are we online anymore? I just want to make sure that, I know there's a lot of residents, they're going to be watching this at home, and I don't want them to think that we turned them off.
No, we're on TV. We're on TV.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're still live.
Someone's going to be calling in.
Okay, I saw it on hold, I wanted to make sure, because it says no internet up there, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's for a caller.
Okay, we're fine, okay. Thank you for clarification on that. Thank you for coming in, I appreciate that. I understand the need for housing, especially, you know, some affordable housing in the town, but I've sat at the planning board meetings many, many times, and sat there and argued with my own planning board, talking about density, and sit there and like, why? Like, why do we have to fill every ounce of land and jam as many units as we can? And I've sat there and I've heard them say, well, we have to, because that's the only way we can build it. My opinion is always spent, well, then don't build it. If you need to build that many, you know, to jam it in there, I mean, there's plenty of profit to be made on building so many houses. Eight, I think, is really pushing it down there, especially for the condition of the lot, the infrastructure that's down there. I'm not even sure, I asked the town manager to speak with our own departments to get us an update, and hopefully he can fill us in after I ask this question, but the roadways are atrocious down there, and they're, they've been falling apart because of the flooding that's been happening down there. I know we've been planning to do some roadway improvements, but I think there's, prior to them, resurfacing roadways is because I think there needs to be water lines that maybe need to be replaced, or something else that's going on. So I'd just like to ask the town manager if he can give us an update of, like, the condition of the water lines that are down there. If you're going to put in eight homes, that's going to be putting more pressure on what we already have as poor down there. I don't want to cause more problems.
Yep, so that, there are areas of roads, and there are roads in that area that are slated for the next phase of water.
Yep.
There's old asbestos pipe down there that is planned to be replaced, and I think in the next three years, three to four years. As far as paving goes, we have recently paved St. Mary's Street, School Street, Vernon Street from St. Mary's to the end, and Water Street, and Bay State Road. So those are paved. The rest of the paving won't take place until after we fix the water lines.
We got residents disagreeing, which we're in the audience. So those have been paved, or they?
Yeah, that's what...
Okay, they live there. So I'm trying to get, we can look into it, so we can find that.
I'm looking at the list in front of me.
There's probably patches, but no, maybe a few. But that's every, their every length.
The water stuff on the, if you come up to Vernon Street to Maine, the water lines start on the right-hand side of St. Mary's and do not go down the left, and they stop the paving right there.
All right, so I don't want to open this up till, you know, we're getting into a thing, but we'll look into that, we'll get that information. But prior to us making anything, I want to know what the condition of our water lines are out there. This area is, I don't know how many calls I get for flooding down there. Every time we get a major storm, people are complaining about what's going on. Have you had any coordination with the town? Have you had discussions about, you know, you're talking about using town land to make a walking trail? Have you had those concessions, discussions with anybody from the town? Because maybe the town has other uses for the land.
Right, so we have not had those discussions yet, again, it's a very high-level concept and idea of what we want to do, so we fully anticipate to have those, should this move to the ZBA and figure out, you know, is this a good fit? Speaking of like, not even want the walking trail, maybe it's something else.
Okay, no, I just want to, like I said, it's, it sounds like, you know, you're proposing something, and it's like, almost like a promise of we're going to try to do something as part of your package, and you don't have the right to do this. So that's something I just want to clarify, that, like, that's not something that is, if we allow this, you're going to get that, because then it may not even be approved. You know, we have, like I said, we've been talking about, this area, you're talking about underground detention for water, this is a marsh area. It's like, it's such a wetlands, and the whole area is surrounded by water, so that's going to be a challenge to retain water where, once you start digging, you're going to hit water, you know? So that's a concern of mine. So I like the idea of providing more housing for our community, but not at the cost of paving areas causing more water. I mean, if you're going to build a home, that's going to cover areas of, I understand the VFW is there, and the whole parking lot's paved, I get the whole thing, I've been down there many times, I know the area very well. But like I said, I've also driven down there and, you know, just to get a rainstorm, and worrying if you're going to get stuck in that puddle as you're trying to get up and down the streets. That's how much water is down there. So we have some own infrastructure. I would suggest, if you're really talking about putting a proposal, then you need to coordinate and find out what the plans are from the town DPW, to find out what they plan to do for water, and drainage improvements down there, and what you can actually do down there. To say that you're going to put in eight units on two acres, that's quarter acre lots, and some of them, some appear to be less than quarter acres from what I saw from the proposal, because of what your restrictions are, there's wetlands and other problems down there. I think it just, I have concerns, that's all. And I, like I said, I'll wait to see what you're proposing, but I think that's a little bit dense for my liking, and I just think it's not something that, you know, it's zoned this way for a reason. I understand that the other areas aren't, but that's what the residents voted for, for zoning. You know, it's like, we zone certain things in areas, because the residents have the final say when we go to town meeting, and they zone areas. You know, we did a zoning rewrite, and we put areas in, but I just want to make sure that we're taking in consideration of what the residents want around there. Part of our bylaw, when we had this discussion, is that anything that's going to be zoned for a specific area, there will be public meetings when people are going down, and the local residents will have a say if there's something going to be developed in their area. So that's going to be something that we would like to see as well, to have the residents' input on what goes on in there. Like I said, I like housing, I just, like I said, I have concerns about the site. It really is, it has its challenges already, and then jamming as much as you can on something that already has challenges gives me great concern. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. Okay, it's me now. I only have a couple of questions, because everybody's asked the same question, and I agree with Mr. Kratman with the density, but I think this gives us an opportunity to solve the flooding problem down there, if you can work with the town engineers, and bring in your own engineer and say, what can we do to resolve the flooding that could be two blocks down the road? You know, do we have the infiltration and all that other infrastructure? But the other, the last question I had was, Ms. Wellman touched on the point of what kind of houses they're going to be, and you said Colonials and stuff, but are they all going to be the same and equal, so you don't have a one-bedroom for the affordable and a three-bedroom for the market rate homes? Did you follow me?
They would all be the same size.
It'd all be the same size, so, okay.
They have to be in this thing, would you?
That's right.
Okay.
You can't tell from the outside which are the affordable units.
So my last question, and it's probably not faced to you, it's probably, I'll go through you, Mr. Montori, how does this affect the new law with the ADU units?
It's a good question. We'd have to...
Sorry, Alex.
The only way it would be affected by the new ADU law as part of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, is that we would have potentially eight new single-family homes that could reasonably put in an ADU on the property, no different than the family suite special permit that we have now.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's all I have. Board members, you want to go through it again? Everybody done? Everybody good?
For now, I think.
Okay, again, this is a.
We'll take a deeper dive as, I'm sure, as the.
You will.
Yeah, I'd like to see the full design.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to do.
You know, I do agree with, you know, the density. The flooding is definitely a concern. I think you're going to need some sort of infiltration, and I'm concerned that, that those town parcels are going to be needed for some sort of mitigation down there. And, you know, if you did ultimately have to go for what is originally zoned under the two acre, would be two homes, and then you could mitigate, based upon the size of the house and based upon the green space, you'd be able to mitigate that. So, you know, I agree with the rest of the board that this is going to be something that has to be discussed in great detail with the DPW, because those parcels there, those two wooded parcels, are taking, you know, 75% of that water that's not, that's basically shee flowing off the parking lot and down to the, you know, the wetlands in the back, and then it's basically capturing in that wooded area. So anything that's done in that wooded area is going to compound that problem if there's not proper mitigation within those. So, and again, I know there's not, there's no specific drainage systems that take it out of that area. That's the reason everything is just flooding. So, but looking forward to seeing the other, the remaining, or the rest of these detailed packages as it comes forward.
And just also, we wanted to say, so Mr. Holland's point, that's exactly what we would want to be doing with this project, is helping to solve the issue of flooding that exists currently at the site. We would have to anyways for the, for the homes. But again, the goal here is to work with the community to, you know, provide something good here. And if we can get rid of flooding at the same time that we're providing more affordable housing, and we come up with a good mitigation plan for specifically that area, and if, and if that comes with, you know, better road access and paving and everything else, then we would love to be a part of that solution and work with you on that.
All right, thank you. This is only a preliminary hearing, so it's not even a hearing, it's just a discussion. I want to thank you for coming in, and I look forward to speaking to you in the near future.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Chairman Verda.
Okay.
Well, I look forward to going to one of your public meetings.
Yes.
Okay, next up is Choice Inc., what's that?
6:45.
Oh, what time is it?
It's 6:35.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we recess for?
Five.
Five minutes.
Seven.
Eight minutes.
Good evening and welcome back. Next on our agenda is Choice Incorporated Icon Trahan Elementary School redevelopment proposal discussion. And you people are here for that, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Can you introduce yourself with the record name and address of the company?
Sure. My name is David Hederson. I'm the Executive Director of the Chelmsford Housing Authority and I'm here representing Choice. Choice Housing Opportunities for Intergenerational and Community Endeavors. It's our nonprofit arm. And with me tonight is Bethany Moody from Icon Architecture, Keith McDonald from Stratford Capital, and my Senior Director of Operations, Kirk Fulton. So this is our primary team and I'd just like to say thank you so much for inviting us to speak tonight. We are incredibly excited to provide this response to your RFP. As we have, I'll just say this, I've enjoyed working with the town of Tewksbury for some time now. I was thinking about, you know, we're working right now with Soldier On on providing subsidies for the development in Tewksbury. We, as the housing authority, we're working with the Tewksbury Housing Authority on all their capital planning for their developments.
That's great.
We provide a local preference for all Section 8 participants, who, people who live in Tewksbury who want to apply for housing through our organization. And way back in the day when the villa was being developed, we were part of the team providing the technical assistance to make that a reality. So to come back today, many years later, and to be part of this proposal really excites us. One of the things I will say is, we as a team have really loved bringing old schools back to life. You know, some may look at an old school and say, oh, it's better just to tear that thing down and build brand new. But just recently, this team here and myself were at a grand opening. And we had a number of students that came back and said, my parents, myself, attended this school. And that site remains today, part of the community, part of the fabric, and the story continues. So as we look at this project at the Trinhain School, I wanted to make sure that when we provided the submission to all of you, that I provided you with, I don't want to say the maximum asks or the maximum that I would ever come to you for. I am not someone, and our team are not people that like to say, oh, don't worry about it. We only need this much, or we can do a project this small. We came forward and said, we would like to do the most, forty-six units at that site. Knowing that we could potentially reduce that number. We came to you and said, we would like X number of local dollars and have a twenty million dollar match. Because I don't want to come here tonight or ever and ask for half that amount and then say, two years into the deal, surprise everyone, you know, like other developers may do, we need another million or two. So we wanted to provide the worst-case scenarios based upon the goal or the vision that we have for the site today. So we all go into this project with an open, open eyes. So I could go on and talk about how excited I am to bring this school back to reality. But I want to say right off the bat, with the forty-six units, we're looking at thirty units that we will, as allowed by law, have a local preference for. You know how many Tewksbury residents that are seniors that are currently begging for an affordable housing opportunity. To be able to say thirty units will have a local preference, but potentially all forty-six could be local residents at the end of the day, is an amazing thing. And the last thing I'll say is, whatever local funds are being provided, we're bringing in another twenty million dollars from other resources, which is great. I'm going to turn this over to Bethany to talk a little bit about the design.
So I'm just going to do a quick flip through here. So Icon Architecture, we've been around for over twenty-five years and we've considered ourselves creative stewards of the communities that we're working in. But we've had over ten years partnership with the Stratford Choice Group as well. Building and getting involved in these communities that are already strong, but we want to bolster that kind of resilience in that neighborhood feel. And as David mentioned, a lot of that has been done through these Massachusetts Historic School reused projects. We love the rich bench of these projects. They're usually relying on historic tax credits, but also a small sense of addition that we don't want to overpower the site, but it helps meet the need of the neighborhoods that we're serving. And so on a quick flip, we've got Simpkin School. It included an addition and added sixty-five units of affordable senior housing. The Cody School, really special project. We had some incredible, unique spaces that provided supportive housing to residents while preserving those historic spaces that just aren't built anymore and really embracing some of those inherent inefficiencies of old buildings that result in some of the most loved valuable residential spaces that we have. Another elementary school reuse, the Oxford School, also included a sensitive addition. Some of those unique elements end up preserved within people's apartments. And this is the one we were just at, the ribbon cutting. It was really special. It's, that's what our favorite piece about this, I think, the stories that would get these teachers, these staff, the students, that they grew up in the buildings. These buildings served a really special core place in the heart of that community. And now in their second life, we're getting to have those residents back into the buildings and keep it moving forward. And one more on here, obviously not a historic school, but just representative of some of the other projects that we work on together. The Helena Crocker Project really provides some unique supportive services and senior community services that we think are really valuable for these neighborhoods. So looking more at our design concepts here. So this is a little bit different of a school project than obviously we were showing on the PowerPoint slides. But no less unique. So we're looking at this as the mid-century modern reimagined. So this era of school, really big emphasis on the indoor-outdoor connection that we think is just this awesome opportunity to play up for our senior residents. So we're taking on to this idea of, you know, there's the ribbon windows that are lining these buildings. There's a lot of expansive landscape and we want to pick up on that and push it forward. So we are proposing, you see the blue footprint is the existing school. We are proposing some small demo for some of the later additions that are past the historic mark. Looking to restore that to some more historic green. And then in the orange, we're looking at a garden addition, again, that's meant to be supplementary and complimentary to the existing school building, but actually bolsters that idea of the outdoor courtyard and gives more opportunity for the new residents here to have active outdoor space, make that connection and get outside of their homes. And still keeps the overall context of the school and its piece in the neighborhood without, you know, blowing that massing out of proportion. We're also looking at, I think I mentioned, restoring more of the historic green. So there was a lot more of the school drop-off loop that we want to try and bring back, put more trees back onto the site and preserve some of the existing resources, but build upon that, adding more potentially pickleball courts. Just trying to reinforce that activity, whatever feels fitting with the community. And playing up some of those walking trails that are already in place and really building those resources.
Can I add one more thing to that last?
Yes, yes.
And so one of the points that was brought up way back, when we were looking at when the legislation was passed, the preservation of that buffer along the perimeter. And that was one thing that we looked at on the sidewalk and when we discussed the addition. We looked at that parking area to where we were going to locate that addition. So we were thoughtful about the location of the addition and the preservation of that green buffer and of those trees that are there. Just wanted to add that.
I might just actually like to bookend that idea here. I know I'm skipping ahead a bit, but again, this is just a view of the idea from the site. So we're trying to keep that green buffer. We've got a peak of the new addition. It would be a two-story addition, but it's really not meant to overpower the existing school massing. It's meant to be, again, forming that courtyard setback from the actual face of the school, but complimentary to the massing as a whole. So getting a little bit more into the bones here. So again, the mid-century modern school design really...
It's being really obstreperous.
I can hold the board up.
Thank you.
It's going to give me a seizure.
Did you call Savannah? She's retired now. I'm still actively engaged in our profession. Here we go.
You are.
All right, so with the mid-century modern school...
No, that's good though.
He's got him in front of us.
Okay. So really nice layout of the spaces already set up for us. So we've got these more private classroom wings that give that separation from the central heart of the project. So in green there, we're seeing that would be the covered entry that we already know. Down there, it looks a little bit Jetsons. We cherish that. But still keeping, that was the, that was the original entry into the project. We want to maintain that relationship to the site. It's also leading right into that, what was the former cafeteria. We see this as still maintaining the heart of that project and where a lot of the active multipurpose space for the residents will be grabbing up any of these other pocket spaces that could still have that indoor-outdoor connection. So, you know, laundry is in main, social space for the senior population aging in place, taking advantage where we can. A lot of our historic school projects have these wide corridors. Again, really unique opportunities that you don't get in a new build. We like to take advantage of those as much as possible and where it's appropriate, replicate it in some of the transition spaces as we connect our new addition. But all of this is emphasizing that indoor-outdoor connection. Hope nobody's getting, having a stroke.
I'm trying not to have a seizure.
Angie's taking care of that right now.
Celebrating that glazing, all of this is, again, getting, getting a refresh on the envelope too. So that we're very passionate about making sure that these buildings are performing, but not losing that, that fabric and that shell that people are familiar with. Digging in a little bit deeper into the units themselves, here's a blow-up of a typical historic classroom reuse.
Can I have a little step back?
What's completely different about this type of project is we've got this already built-in direct exterior connection. So now senior apartments get to benefit from having their own private patio space, but also getting to engage with the larger courtyard that's being designed and inherent to the property, which is just completely unique.
Can I just say that like for our seniors to have access to their own outdoor patio area is a luxury that we don't get to do in new construction? So as you see in the new wing, we're not going to be able to replicate that because they just would not really permit that. But in the existing wing, to be able to provide a senior with access to the outdoor, I mean, to have their own little private little space is fabulous.
Yeah, I can see that would be great.
Yeah. And then, I mean, so again, we, we follow, there's so many senior guidelines, senior design guidelines that are built into the low-income housing tax credits. We follow those and all of the guidelines for universal design. But these classrooms are really lending themselves something extra special. We get a lot more storage space that is usually hard to come by, thinking about as somebody's downsizing and wanting to stay into the community. Again, we've got a lot of local preference for this project as they're aging in place and have more needs for mobility devices. So these are all things that are inherently baked into the fabric of this building. And even some bonus space that we see could be used as a den again for downsizing or if you need somebody to come support in the home, you have that space available and you still have that privacy. So we think that preserving this school is, it's a little bit different. It's not what people might be used to seeing as historic preservation. But this is what is now being seen as historic preservation. And it's a really special, different opportunity that we haven't seen yet.
And I wasn't sold on, you know, at first I said, you know, let's like, let's really, let's bulldoze this thing. And then as they, as, you know, we walked through it and looked at it as a brand, it'll be brand new again and renewed. And some of these unique spaces, even that cafeteria with all those windows, to be used as a community space for residents? I mean, it's just, there's so many unique opportunities. And even the tunnels that exist under the building can be reused, reused for the hot, I mean, the electric hot water systems that we struggle to find, you know, places to locate them now. So it was just like, after speaking with the team, they were fantastic at selling us and really building that passion for a renew of the site. And, I'm sorry, then I kind of jumped in. But also, but again, going back to the fact that how many generations of kids, you know, how many years did kids leave or, you know, go through that school? And they'll bring with them those stories. And I just think, you know, these opportunities are all great. I'll go back, Ed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we like to see coming around a second time. Or, I mean, it's had actually a few iterations over time. We've, we've seen it built up, but that's, that's what we see. This, this school has been central to the community. We want to see its legacy continued and we think we can do it appropriately to better serve that community with the right number of units, the right fit of population, the right affordability mix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there anything else on these slides here then?
I think we actually managed to get them all.
Okay. But I'll hold that close up here as we ask questions, we want to refer to them. Keith, could you maybe share any of the final things we want to wait for those questions about the financing? If you want to take a quick walkthrough of what the concept was or...
Yeah.
I'm happy to do that.
There's a slide for funding and timing with no information.
Okay. The pricing is held because it's an RFP process.
Yeah.
Pricing is secondary.
Right.
Decide based on the terms of the proposal.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
So what was the intent of, Mr. Chairman, if I may, what was the intent of the funding and timing slides?
So the intent was that we're going to be requesting some local funds. We're then going to be submitting an application to EO HLC. So just to go through that really quick. So low-income housing tax credits for projects of this size, just imagine, you know, there's a door at HLC. That door opens once a year for projects. Usually when a project is, let's say this project was permitted, we had local funds, we were all ready to go. We would knock on that door and say, here's our project. HLC would say, you're welcome to come in and submit a full application if they allow us. Usually they look at it that first year and say, there's some things that maybe need to be modified slightly. And then the second year, we knock on the door and they accept the whole application in and will get funded in the second year. So there's a lot of time involved with going after the low-income housing tax credits and those other funding sources. But again, we're able to create a hundred percent, for the most part, we're doing, sorry, ten subsidized units at this point, thirty-one that are going to be affordable without a subsidy, and then five market rate units. That is currently the mix right now that we're presenting to you. But that can be negotiated and changed based upon the desires and tastes, you know, that you all have. Some communities want to see five market, so there's an option for people that don't want to give us any income information just to rent within the development. Some may say, instead of ten subsidized, kick those five market rate and make those subsidized. We can go up to sixteen. What I'm going to be, what I'm getting at is, is we're going to be going after the low-income housing tax credits. We're going to be going after other sources of funding to get to that twenty million dollar mark. When we're able to access all of those funds, we're not going to have a twenty million dollar mortgage that we're going to have to service. By not having a twenty million dollar mortgage to service, we can actually have a development that's going to actually be affordable, you know, in perpetuity to the residents of this community. That does not happen overnight. So if, let's say, the town of Tewksbury before the end of this year decides to move forward with this, we still have zoning to go through, we'll design zoning, applications to HLC, which will happen usually, let's say it's February every year. So the first time we could ever knock on the door at HLC would probably be February of 2026. We'd probably be back February 2027. February 2027, they may decide in August of 2027 that they want to fund it. It takes six months to bring a number of banks and financial resources to a closing. The closing may take three months and we're already in 2028. By the time construction finishes, we're going to be end of 2028, early 2029. So again, I always want to be honest, direct and forthright with how things work. You knock on the door the first time, they don't hand you a check and say, go build your building. It's a number of knocks, then you get in and you're able to realize this dream. So as far as funding, it's local resources and then state and federal funds that we'll be looking for. Timing, we're looking at, I always say, you know, from concept to when people move in, three to five years.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn it over to board members, I want to thank you for your presentation. You did a great job. I just have one question, just, it's on the tip of my tongue here because you were talking about financing. The new bond bill came out and the governor has said that they would prefer restoring older buildings, old municipal buildings. Is that something where you would apply for the funding?
Well, yes. I mean, I'll say, people would rather see things preserved or redeveloped versus, you know, new construction. So I think what I understood from the governor was, community should look at their existing portfolio, maybe old municipal buildings that can be reused for these purposes. I don't imagine there's going to be a special funding source that's going to be something that we're going to be able to tap into and have more. So my answer is...
Actually, that's, I understood that they were going to apply funding for it.
Well, I would say yes, but I would say we're not going to be able to have our cake and eat it too. So usually there's a pot of money that we can get. And the estimation is, for every affordable unit you build, whether it's a one-bedroom elderly unit or a three-bedroom family unit, the average cost is around seven hundred thousand dollars. Whether that seven hundred thousand dollars is made up of a special pool of funds for municipal reuse of projects or from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or, you know, and the National Trust Fund, there's going, there's always been these different pockets of funds. They may add another pocket to incentivize communities to reuse old buildings, but it's not going to mean we're going to get more overall. It's just going to be speed things up. So maybe instead of one year, two years, it might be a definite yes in two years instead of a third year. So I'll say the bond bill has given us a lot of hope. But it's also leaves us with a number of questions. Because right now it's been approved, but we don't know yet the exact terms of, you know, what specific programs can we apply to.
Okay.
But I'll tell you something. If there's money out there, I'm the kind of guy that no matter what, take it of a program for, you know, like that come from Mars, and I'll be the first one in line asking for it. Because that's always the way I've operated. If there's a dollar or a penny on the table, I will take it and build housing. I promise you.
He does.
Well, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the board now. We'll start with Mr. Crapness this time.
Thank you. It's refreshing to have somebody come in and give honesty upfront. I like your enthusiasm for these projects. I applaud you for creating a community development board in your community. It was something that we desperately need in our community and partnering with you, I hope to build on that if this goes forward. You know, this is, I just sat and talked about, you know, another development that was proposed and talked about density and what I'm always concerned about. When we're talking about senior housing, that kind of, I've been involved with, I've been on a community development board for thirty-something years. I've been involved building these places. I've seen schools get rehabbed. I've seen what happens to the things. There's always the concern of, you're going to put all these places in there, it's going to cause traffic, it's going to cause that. All the senior developments that I've ever been involved in, there's never been traffic concerns from it because it tends to be, you know, you don't have everybody getting up at nine o'clock in the morning and heading out to work. You don't have everybody coming home at five o'clock. You don't tend to have three or four cars in the parking lot. It's, it just changes the philosophy of what you do. And some of the developments that I've been involved in don't even have enough parking spots for the developments because not everybody has a car. Granted, that's down the city. This is Tewksbury, totally different. But with this proposal, you're keeping green space. You're keeping the playground. You're adding things that are needed for, you know, the community, you pick-a-ball courts, planting trees, putting those things. That's something that the residents want in this area. There's, we have, I mean, the low estimates that I've heard is eighteen to twenty-five-year wait for senior housing in this community. It's, it's appalling that we have people that are waiting. You apply for senior housing in this town when you hit sixty or sixty-five, you're going to be ninety if you live that long to get in. And so, so in other words, we don't have senior housing. We just simply don't. It's just, you're never going to get in, in the time that you apply. So we sat here as a board and we talked about this, this is one of our priorities. I love the fact that the school would be rehabbed. You know, that gives a lot of people probably a lot of concerns, but when they rehab a school, they don't keep the, you know, the interior. They're going to tear the walls out. They're going to tear the things out. They're going to keep the frame. You know, that's what they tend to do when they build these things. It's going to be, all hazardous material will be removed. All the windows will be safe and clean and be able to do those type of things. So I've seen what goes on when you build these places. And when they've been built, the community loves them, that, that I've seen that goes on. Because once again, you're, you're creating a place where residents who are living in homes and maybe... and maybe cannot afford them because their kids get a little older and move on, and now they want to stay in their community where they grew up or where they were, where they, you know, all their friends live. And so when you build something like this, it's something that, like, it's a neighborhood of friends that grew up all in town and want to stay here. The local preference is big, especially with seniors, they tend to want to stay in their own community. Like I said, it's a little large for initial proposal from what I can see. I'm a little, you know, we can look at that. But I'm also looking at it, the need is so great. So it's, I don't want to say no either because, you know, I know we have so many, you know, seniors that are waiting to get into these places. We have the land, we have a location, we have the ability to do it. That's something that, it's our duty to at least listen to it and exhaust every effort that we can to try to find something to provide housing for our seniors in this community. So I thank you for coming forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Krappman. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, love the energy. It's clear your passion about what you do. And you put together a great presentation and a complete package. So my first question is going to be kind of for the residents watching, again, very complete package. You've presented a lot of information for the funding and what you're going to be asking for from the town. Could you just kind of clarify on that a little bit?
Okay, so the ask is for not to exceed approximately 4.25 or 6.5.
7.5.
Okay, 4.75. And that was a number that can be, I mean, I wanted to present the not to exceed number, okay? There are a number of things that I want to share with you. When I told you we go knocking on the door. So there are some sources that we will be asking for from the state that are not always guaranteed. We may say, we want $1 million of historic tax credits. But historic tax credits may only be issued in the amounts of, let's say, $100,000 each in a quarter, each six months. So while I could have presented to you a request for 3.5 with the hope of receiving so much in historic tax credits, it really wouldn't be honest of me. So our hope is, is to be able to go forward and request historic tax credits, knock on the door every quarter or every time they allow me. If they let me ring the bell every week, I will not ring the bell every week and ask for it and reduce the amount we're asking. But it would be a knock to exceed 4.75 with the hope that we would be able to secure as many historic tax credits as possible. As well as I had said to you, it could be one year, it could be two year. If it's two years, then I get to knock more times on the door and get more awards for historic tax credits, potentially lowering that 4.75 ask. So again, there's other factors that will be, you know, involved with that final number. I will be direct again and say the initial $500,000, there's a $500,000 comment within that proposal. Because Tewksbury has not been certified as an MBTA community, right now, you're not able to, you know, secure some of these, you know, funding sources from HLC.
Right.
So if we were to be awarded this project and we were to start investing significant, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars into permitting and to design, knowing that we're not eligible to apply, it's a big ask from any partner. So we wanted to be straightforward and say, we would be asking for, you know, up to $500,000 in initial funding to be provided because of that risk.
Perfect, thank you. Again, I appreciate the candor. So as you mentioned, the reuse of this building, you weren't initially sold on. I wasn't either. I, it's grown on me a little bit with some of the things you've presented. But my question is, you know, you mentioned, you come in asking for the maximum, which I can appreciate, and you said that there was, you know, room for some change in there. I think 46 units is a lot for that site. I think that addition seems a little large to me. Again, I understand that there's a mathematical equation that makes it financially feasible. In an ideal world, I'd like to see the addition go away. That's probably not feasible. But I would like to see, you know, not what the maximum ask is, but what the realistic ask is. What would you want to see in Chelmsford? What would you want to do in your own backyard? And again, not saying that this is, again, all the candor, all the energy, all good, got it. But what's that middle of the road path look like?
To be very direct, so when we start talking about like unit numbers, so I don't know. This room here is larger than a unit we'd be building on that addition. So when we start talking about 600 square feet, you know, 650 being a unit, you know, we're talking about, you know, two units at maybe 1,300 square feet, less than two of these rooms. And when I think about Chelmsford, I think about the conversations I'm having with the select board, with members of the community, and they're saying, we're short by six units. Six affordable units we need somewhere. And those six affordable units in a for sale development means, well, it's only going to be 20%. So six units would be a 30 unit development built somewhere else in town in someone else's backyard. So in my head, I'm always thinking, like, you know, what I'd rather see, six units smaller than this room, built on a parking lot, you know, instead of being built next to some abutter in Tewksbury that's going to be saying, you're tearing down all these trees. So I said, you know, our sweet spot is always 50. Our sweet spot is 45 to 55 units for senior housing. And that is because, you know, we move people in and not all 46 people are going to be frail, need services, need, you know, referrals for programs. They're probably going to be relatively healthy, happy, and need very little. But we want to be able to have a certain number. So if we're organizing a meals program, a nursing services activities, that we're not having two people look at each other in the room and say, hey, it's you again. So we're creating a community. And I think getting beyond or just reimagining the idea of each of the units is less than the size of this room. And when we start cutting off those units, you know, we could totally bring it down to 40. But again, 70% of 40 that are going to be local preference is going to eliminate that person that's going to be calling you. They're going to be calling you and saying, I need a place. And it's an opportunity and it's not my decision, it's your decision. But I'm saying, for me, in the community I've worked in for 37 years, if I can squeeze six more in that are 600 somewhat squared units on a parking lot that's not going to be towering over someone, keeping the green space, I would say, if you can get 46 in on that footprint, let's do it.
I disagree, I disagree with nothing you've said. I'm sorry, you have a comment?
And to add to what David had alluded to is that there's economies of scale as well.
Yeah.
So once you have 46 units, you can, you can start, you'll see the cash flow right now. It's already negative trending. So the more units we're able to actually service the building properly, as far as HVAC, heating, passive, and everything else. So the number of units we need to lose sweet spot as well as if we were able to put a property, full-time property manager, full-time maintenance staff. Otherwise, we're going to have to skinny that down somehow and then the services.
And that's the stuff, you know, like, definitely another phone calls happen. That's when I started having the angst of like, because well, we would be managing it. And I want Mary or Bob or, you know, or Patrick or Jane, your neighbors, to be happy and say, oh, my gosh, thank you. This is amazing. This is affordable. Come over and look at it. And if it's between the 45 and, you know, 55, in my understanding, I knew like the 12 to 18, the 20s and the 30s were like the ideal. When we sat down and we looked at like potentially bulldozing, we would never do a one-story building. Like it would never be a one-story building. It would be a three-story building. And I was just like, no, it's going to be too high. Then we looked at the wing and we said, look, it's a parking lot. It's a parking lot. We're keeping the green buffer. So we went through this process and us coming to you tonight and you hearing it for the first time, it may take some time to, maybe it's not 46, maybe it's 42. But I would just allow some time to pass.
Well, that's why we're having this, right? It's not a vote tonight, it's a discussion. Get that information so we can marinate on it. And again, I agree with everything you said for the most part. I think the number of the units piece, when this went to the reuse committee and there was a lot of discussion and thought around this, one of the arguments for reuse was not having new construction, not disrupting the abutters. And that's kind of one of my concerns with that addition. It's going right on, I know you're reserving that tree cover, but right on that property line or close to that property line with those abutters over there. So that was part of the concern just from the community feedback when we did this. But again, I get where you're coming from. You'd mentioned that the new addition wouldn't be allowed to have those patio spaces. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? What would be the blocker on that?
The cost.
Okay.
I mean, realistically, you know, when we're looking at, you know, a finite resource, no matter how large the bond bill was, this is affordable housing. And the reality is, is I don't want to come to you and say, we're going to put, you know, these patios and these balconies on all these other units. And we want 4.75 million dollars from you because the first conversation is going to be...
What can come off the table?
Why? Let's take them off, let's value engineer, like, let's get rid of those checks and keep the money front of the project. So, you know, again, this is a conversation. And the thought process is, those are considered more luxury items. So at least have it for the existing building, but not the new addition.
Okay. I appreciate the time and the presentation. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I'm excited to have you here. I appreciate your presentation, it's a great job. Both of my kids went to the school. I'm very familiar with this elementary school and I was in favor of bulldozing it. So huge, get rid of it. Some of my colleagues at the table have been adamant, don't do that. And I'm very pleased to see this presentation, so. And I've been in those tunnels. I've seen, I know, I know what, it was wet, it was, yeah, in those tunnels when I was there. So I totally get it. And I was not confident that that would be something that could be done, that rehabbing this could be, or anybody would want to be there. So I'm really, I'm really kind of excited. I'm also of an age where now I have parents in their 80s. And, yeah, the deep sigh and that breath that you just did, yeah, I do that a lot. And my mom lives 250 miles away in Maine and my dad lives in Florida. So it's not a, you know, I'm not going over with cookies and breakfast, that doesn't happen. And there is no place for my mother to live nearby. As we heard, the list here is very long and it's for residents of Massachusetts only. So I get a lot of phone calls, particularly from older women, single women, who have outlived their husbands or whatever, and they're losing their housing. And I get these calls not infrequently. And so I'm calling organizations like CTI and so forth, trying to find particularly older, single women housing. And, you know, this is a really compelling solution to that issue. The site, I want to talk a little bit about this particular site specifically versus, you know, the concepts of housing in general. This, the hope here was that we would be able to retain a community feel to this space, particularly with the use of the playground, because there are a lot of family homes that surround, in the surrounding neighborhood, that currently can just walk onto the backside of the site and access the playground. And there are, you know, no parkland spaces in this neighborhood at all. There's lots of families, there's lots of dog owners in the neighborhood on both sides of Main Street. And you have a crossing that was just put in at the end of Salem Road there. That's very expensive, it keeps getting hit. But, and so there are a lot of, there's a lot of pedestrians. And that pedestrian traffic has increased with some other housing projects on the road. So I like that you have this perimeter walking path that might be restored. The playground is something that we want to keep and perhaps enhance through grants or something like that over time. I love that you're thinking about pickleball, but I think you're going to drive everybody bananas with pickleball.
But that's just, I'm sorry.
I know.
I said, like, so in our conversation, I said, you know, something is going to be senior focused, like pickleball.
Yeah.
I mean, I know the sounds, I mean, believe me. So we'll just say, possibly, you know, with input from community, we can decide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would say yes to pickleball.
Well, we have some pickleball courts going elsewhere, but I just know it's super loud. But I just think that that's an important thing to try and figure out how to have mixed generations, the community coming onto the parcel. That would be where people are renting and living is a little bit of an unusual concept, I think. And so that might be an enhancement at the state level if we can find a way to talk about that, if that makes sense for, I love that you say we're creating a community here and you are. And it is, my mother, 55 years in gerontology, so I live and breathe it. So I understand what you're trying to do. And that's a particular, perhaps, challenge or opportunity for you, but if you can expand on that at all.
So I will say this too, we always have community gardens, raised beds. And it's not just like, okay, we're putting in two raised beds. You get four inches by four inches, you might get six inches by six inches. We will put as many raised beds to grow vegetables, to grow flowers. I mean, we want to create what the residents want to see. And when we say residents, we mean people that are going to be living in the building. But as we also go through the permitting process, we're not someone that wants to like just meet the abutters when we have the hearing. We want to bring the abutters together with us directly before we're going to the ZBA. Because we want to hear what their issues, concerns, fears, wants, desires are. Because if someone's been walking their dog for years through this site, I'm not going to stop them because half of the people living in this building are going to be thrilled to be able to maybe see a golden or, you know, a mix. Because that's what they had and they can't have one anymore because there's just, there's not enough time in life to have.
Right.
So I think this is an initial proposal to all of you, but it's also for you to hear us say, this is not only our project, it's the community's project, it's the abutters' project. And that's what we're committed to do, you know. And if there's a specific ask and it's not part of our funding source, I have no problem knocking on doors and going somewhere else to ask for funds. I have no problem even looking at Choice, Inc., our...
I think what's also important to do is...
Sorry.
He blocked him right out.
Too short. What's basically, what's very important pertaining to the timing and everything else is, this is going to be a friendly 40B. So prior to us submitting to the state, there's so many deals out there. We're not going to have anything contentious as far as our development goes because there's so many deals. So we want to do something that is forthright and is collaborative process. So prior to us submitting to the 40B, we'll, we'll sit down with amongst the select board and everyone else to figure out exactly what they would like or they don't like. We'll try to implement those changes prior to.
Yeah.
Because the select board is important to us, although we're going to go to the ZBA for zoning. Again, we want a friendly 40B and it should be a collaborative process.
Okay, great.
He answers it so much more succinctly than I can.
Your team is legend. You and your team are legend. That is true. Your reputation precedes you. I appreciate the information you gave to my colleague, Mr. Mackey, on the volumes and the density and the economies of scale. I think that is a very important story to continue to tell. I know this parking lot because I taught my daughter on her first driver's lesson to drive in the back of that parking lot, really hoping she wouldn't hit the school, you know what I mean? And she did a great job. But yeah, that's just a parking lot back there. And I believe the abutting properties are actually a little bit higher. The ground's a little bit higher. It's kind of, the school property is a little lower. So even though it's two stories, you're actually kind of sitting more like a story and a half, if you will. And so perhaps the way you designed the roof line will, you know, I don't know, reduce the massing on the neighbor, but not going to see it anyway.
And so unlike when people say, oh, it's two stories, but it's a peak roof and it looks more like a three-story building or it's a two and a half story building. That's not what we're proposing here. It's going to be like a much lower building. I think when we get in, we can dig into it, we'll be able to show the abutters in this way.
Sure. And then the area where the community guardians, is that where some of the wings were taken down? Where you take those down?
That's the way, I think that portion was added in '76 or something like that.
Yeah.
So yeah, and it's, we're not seeing that it's structurally or envelope wise in very good shape.
No kidding.
Ever. So it, you know, let's get some more, let's pull through this indoor-outdoor connection. Let's provide more green space.
Yeah. No, and it gives you, it gives you some nice connections. There used to be a ball field back here. I think there might still, yeah, a little field, little itty-bitty one, yeah. So the community, I think that you have an interesting challenge because of that community connection, but I like how you're addressing it. And there is no parkland there, so to be able to keep this green space in the front and address that from the street is important because that green space is little in the area. I'm sensitive to the abutters. I have a lot of friends in these streets right here and nearby, and I know that that was their concern. that that was their concern. But I really like this plan so very much, and the need is great. And you guys are doing a great job. My last question is through you, Mr. Chairman, to the manager. What's the current balance in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Last I elected, I think it was 6.1 million.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I would think this would be a good use of those funds, which this board controls.
Can I, can I add something that I just thought?
Yes.
So when you had said you would do know people who were close to the site, also, when you asked about the balconies, one of the conversations that we ended up having, you know, on other projects, you put balconies in, and the abutters seeing a new building go in with, they think.
Being watched.
They're going to have, like, parties, or loud music, or yelling at each other, or, so it also kind of takes some of the fear away, that the residents will not be on a balcony overlooking some of the neighbors. So that's.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to clarify, patios, not balconies.
Okay.
So I was on the patios that you had already pitched. That seemed nice with that little U shape, to be able to have that community look across and see your neighbor who's also on their patio. That was the concept.
Okay. No, but good, well, we can still.
Yeah.
That is.
Yeah.
Chairman, just to go back to the question, we have 5.7 in the Affordable Trust.
Okay.
We will have 1.1 in Housing Reserve, the CPA.
1.1.
6.1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reider.
Thank you. I'll echo the rest of the board. Being last, you don't get many questions that haven't been answered. So I'll ask a couple. You made a reference to electric. Now, is there a requirement under this to be all-electric?
Yes.
Okay. Understanding this is not, we do not have our own electric, and understanding what rates of 37% in the last two and a half years, has that been looked at, that the feasibility, I mean, realistically, and within anticipation that it could be 12% to 17% increase, January, February of this year? So is that wise? In understanding when you're in a community that has their own electric, much lower rates, with the non-stable environment in the electric market, and the request to increase our grid and the requirements for other electric requirements, how do you feel about that?
Okay, so I will say, right now, we have two other projects. We have a 54-unit project at the UMass West Campus, across McGlinvy Restaurant, where we're doing 54 units there. It's passive house. So we're going to have some amazing, some really great energy savings. We're also doing the old poor farm, which is in Westford, which is like from the 1800s, and doing a 33-unit extension off the back. Again, 100% electric. One thing that I love is that we have entered into a contract to buy all of our electric from a sold farm. So right off the bat, we have a 20% savings on electric that we purchase for all of our buildings. We master meter it, so we don't have the residents paying any of the electric bills. Most of our seniors that are living in our buildings are not cranking up the DC. They are cranking up.
The heat. Yes.
Okay. But the wonderful thing about passive, about passive house, and maybe insulate these new buildings, is they really hold on to the heat more than some of the older buildings that maybe we are experiencing, experiencing. Part of the deal is, we don't get something for free from the state. So when we move forward, we have to follow, you know, the guidelines that the state puts forward. And that is to go 100% electric. Am I sold on heating our hot water with electric? No. But I rely on engineers, that, you know, serious professionals that are educating me on what we can do and what the latest technology is to make it work. We're implementing it in our next two projects, and it's happening across the state. I will say this to you, we build into all of our, I'm not going to look at them, because Keith's going to correct me, our 20-year pro forma, significant, you know, we never believe that electric's only going to go up 3% every year.
Right. There's historic data to that that contradicts that.
Exactly. So we, we need to take those into account. We're not taking $20 million from the state or federal government without them, without going through a serious review by professionals. Like, they really, they hold us accountable on all these performance. So it's just not me telling you, oh, don't worry.
Sure, no, and, you know, I'm very familiar with the energy and, you know, the new regulations, but also, you know, realizing that, you know, that trend is trending much higher than anyone's anticipated. So, you know, from a senior, I mean, when you say you're master metering that, at the end of the day, there still is, that has, the cost has to be captured and cost has to be covered. So as you start to see that over, you know, year five, year seven, year 10, you're going to start to see that increased cost. So how is that made up? And it has to be ultimately, because it's made up with the residents, the seniors that are living there, but yet they're based on fixed income with a, you know, if it's a, they're on social security with a 2.5% increase, and when you see utility rates going three to five times greater than that. I mean, again, we can get in the weeds in this, I just see that as, is this something that is a.
We can't pass on those increases.
Okay.
So just so I said.
Okay. And that's, and good to know.
We can't pass on those increases. So, and I have a big sale to make up the differences either. So we have to actually take all of your, and your concerns are echoed by many other people. And we have to be able to prove that we're going to be able to provide a 20-year pro forma, just so we're going to be able to absorb what will happen.
Okay.
And we're committed to that.
To elaborate on that, and to elaborate on just the financial backing of everything, we underwrote this deal today. We're going to have to re-underwrite it in two years when we submit for an application. Therefore, there will be new data associated. And part of the process, as far as utilities go, it's a utility allowance that gets updated from a county perspective.
Okay.
And that utility allowance, believe it or not, is a little higher than it had, a lot higher than it has been in the past, because you have dated properties.
Yep.
So you don't have an efficient, you know, example of something else. But we will be re-underwriting everything from the time we submit.
Okay, okay. It's, it's good, and, you know, I'm sure we'll, that would be something, as this process continued, to be more information on that. And just, again, echoing, the concern is 46, really the right number there. I understand the economy of scale. But, you know, my liking, I would like to see a few less, but I understand the process. And just lastly, as part of your financial, you have the financial requirements, the pilot, and how long is we, how is that, how long is that requested?
Ideally, for underwriting purposes, it's got to be the life of the tax credit program. So it's got to be 15 years.
15 years, okay.
Because then, then the investors and everyone else can underwrite it from a bank perspective.
Okay.
From a permanent mortgage.
Understood.
It does escalate it too, so it, every year it goes up.
Increases, yes. Okay. All right, great. I guess, you know, that for now, in understanding the, in the process, you know, but I like the, the design, I mean, reusing that, that school. I think another challenge, as Ms. Wellman stated, that joining, right now, you, you visit the site, a lot of little kids, they're active, they're riding their bikes, they're playing on the playgrounds, they're playing, how do you blend that with, you know, senior living? Again, they want quiet time, maybe 6 o'clock, and the rowdy time for that kid might be 6 PM. So how do you blend that together? Do you have some sort of barrier? Is it fencing? Is it something that kind of has their own space, but yet you blend them together?
So our office is located, like, right next Little League Fields, and we have, like, 50 elderly residents. And the only real complaint we've had is that it's supposed to be a softball, a softball in front and Little League, like, further away. When, when the kids are playing baseball with the hard, not softballs, windows being broken upon the cars.
Okay.
So we're used to, there's going to be brand-new windows going in that are going to be, meet a certain requirement. I don't, like, I don't see that as a struggle. I see that as.
Okay. And again, you know, I mean, you have the experience, I just.
We're open to everything. We have, the Cody School is actually a kind of funny one, because we have built, like, really super-high netting along the whole thing, because it's used by, like, the summer league, AAA team that are going to pros, so they're just crushing long balls.
Keep going, baseball.
We had put up, like, a $250,000, like, netting that would stop the balls. But we're open. Whatever the town and neighborhood, it would like to just.
Yeah, I think that's the neighborhood, really involving that neighborhood. They've, they've dealt with it vacant, they dealt with the school, they dealt with the noise. This will be a little less intrusive during the days and traffic, but I think involving them from day one is going to be the success of the project.
And it's, it's never a one-size-fits-all.
Absolutely.
As we, we're building more of a portfolio of these multi-generational housing types, they, they do seem to be getting very successful, just again, with the types of mixed uses and getting that active participation. But I don't know that it's, just because a fence worked here is not the right solution here. It's more of a process that we would want to work on with the abutters.
And someone brought up the parking, too. We've done multiple buildings where we've had an easement for town parking. So if there is something that you'd like to do from a, from a young kid perspective, and that's earmarked for a specific area, we're open to parking spots that are just It is the senior housing. We have, I think, 46 parking spaces. Based upon all of our properties, we've used probably 75% of them.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Okay. No, again, thank you. Great presentation. Looking forward to the next steps.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
You all set?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reider. I want to thank you for your presentation. You answered my question I had at first, and usually I'm always the last one, so all the questions have been answered, you know? My one question I do have, though, is the units that you have now, what do they see average rent for an affordable unit? Do you know that?
Yes. So right now, today, including all utilities, so let's just say, this is, if all utilities are included, there are 10 units where people will pay, right now, 30% of their income. So whatever 30% of their income is, will be their rent, okay? The other ones, right now, is 1,547, including all utilities. All utilities.
Okay.
That's amazing.
And that's the most. And that includes, like, that's, that's everything.
But there are some that are less.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
10. But that could be 16. We go all the way to 16.
Well, based on your income.
Yes. And so I think, so this is, so those are, that's the max that's allowed to be charged under the tax credit program. And that's based on 60% of the area median income.
Okay.
So when you see a 40B come in, those could be based on 80%, and so the rent is much higher.
Right.
So we go to the 60% area median income, which that number today is 1,547 with all utilities included. If you pull up the utilities, the number comes up closer around 1,200.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for your presentation. I look forward to talking to you in the near future. I'm going to run it by the board members one more time. Any more questions from anybody?
I just got one last thing. And the whole board, we all say the same thing whenever something is brought in for, in front of us, because the residents are in our areas about density, about what we're doing, and why does everything, you know, everything's jammed into every lot. But I would like to have the town manager reach out to our housing authority. I think it would be beneficial to all of us. Say if they built all of them, what is the waitlist then? That'd be something I think we should take into consideration. If we build all these, and it's still 20 years, do we still want to minimize as much as we can? I mean, we have to listen to the residents, and like I said, it's going to be in one area. But that's something I'd like to know. Like, how much are we taking off that, you know, 18- to 25-year list, or whatever it may be, by putting in this many units? The other thing I wanted to take into consideration is that, right now, on, we're on the hook for $2 to $2.5 million to tear this thing down.
Correct.
So we tear it down, we get an empty lot for $2.5 million. We spend an extra $2 million, we build housing for 40 seniors.
Sure.
I think that's something that we really should, that should, the resident should understand that, that we, no matter what, we have to spend at least $2 to $2.5 million if we do nothing with this lot, just to tear it down. That doesn't give you a park, doesn't give you anything. It gives you a torn-down building. You know, and so with this reusing, that's why I was arguing about retaining that property, that's something we're saving the taxpayers $2.5 million if they reuse that property and they renovate it and those type of things. Granted, we're going to pay the rest to build, but it's an investment. It's an investment in, you know, the seniors in our community. So I think that's, we should always take that look. So I appreciate you coming in with those tax credits and that information.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on what Mr. Krappman stated, and that's $2.5 million that's going to have to be a warrant article. This is funding that's already sitting in accounts slated for affordable housing. So this is really not, it's not going to impact the taxpayer if we have to knock that down, and we would need to go to the town meeting for funding to do that. This, the funding is there, it was put there for this specific reason.
That's.
And we've all heard, you know, everyone, that we need housing. We need senior housing. We need affordable housing, but, you know, senior housing is, you know, a big impact to this community. So I think it's a great benefit.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. For the villa, how many units were built in the villa? Do you know? Do you know, Richard?
32.
Do you know?
32. I would say it's around 30.
32. So that was the last investment we did in this community, is that right, Steve? Like, 15 years ago? So.
I guess so.
Something like that? Nancy was on that, yeah. I remember.
As David said, it took us, like, two or three rounds to get the funding.
Yeah.
We put, the town put in a half a million dollars, and I think that project cost $5 million.
Well, it was 15 years ago. It was $5 million for the people at home who can't hear Mr. Sadwick in the back of the room. No, I think that's an important point. I think that it's important that when you get the information on the waitlist, Mr. Montori, that we understand clearly that most, the, the waitlist isn't just just for residents, it's regional, everybody applies everywhere, so it's, it's kind of cumulative. it's regional, everybody applies everywhere, so it's, it's kind of cumulative. So understanding how the waitlists work is in a one-for-one sort of thing. But it's a really good question, and I look forward to it. But thank you all, thank you very much.
Again, thank you for your presentation, and.
Patrick, I think.
I was going to say, mine's actually more.
We all had more questions.
Mine's actually for the board, and this is a point of discussion, not question for you all. Since the, we are not eligible for some of this funding due to the MBTA piece, does it make sense to wait and see how that shakes out, to see if we can save us a half a million dollars? Because I know that's going to be coming down here, hopefully to some sort of resolution in the next few months. So I know that's one of the contested pieces, is what's allowed to be restricted. So not looking for an answer right now, but wanted to put it on the, out there for the board to consider.
All right.
And one, one last thing, I know we'll keep going on, but one last thing that I would make a suggestion to the rest of the board, if they're willing to do it. I've seen these developments, because I've been there. If there's an opportunity for the rest of the board members to maybe tour some of these other locations, you'd be surprised when you get in there. You hear that number, and you say, oh my God, it's, it sounds big, but then you go and you tour the thing, and it's, the density isn't, because of the size of those units. So if they're willing to give an opportunity to see some of those locations, you may want to take an opportunity.
I was going to ask the same question. Maybe we can't go as a group, but we can go as individuals, or maybe two at a time or something like that. We can check with Mr. Montori, and he can communicate with you if we can make arrangements to get in.
Go visit your offices.
To one of the closer units around here, not, don't feel like driving all the way to the.
The little junket to the Cape, Patrick.
No, no.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
Do you have a timeframe that you need an answer?
I think.
We don't need a timeframe, but just know that the timing of that one application round is critical, so.
Yeah.
So there is timing. So what is that?
Yeah.
What's the date? What's the date?
When new, soon.
Answer from this board, just so the board can work backwards.
I think, I think we projected, you know, December, that we need something executed around these.
Okay, yeah.
The most important thing from timing, just to, just add on to the complexity of this, is when David talked about the mass historical wards, we have to get on that right away, because we can't apply for the low-income housing tax credits until we have, you know, 60% of those awards. And it just takes a while for the tranches to come.